Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Regular Meeting at Waterbury Arts Magnet School. We'll begin this evening's meeting with silent prayer. Thank you. Commissioner Sweeney, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone, for Act Two tonight.
Commissioner Watt?
Here.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Pedano?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano O'Durno?
Here.
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Present.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Present.
President Brown?
Present. Full house tonight. Okay, Communications, could I have a motion, please?
Motion received and placed in file for Communications.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. The next is public address to the board, could I have a motion?
Motion to spend regular business here from the public?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. First public speaker is Samantha Rosen. Samantha? Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Samantha Rosen, a recent graduate of the Waterbury Arts Magnet School. Tonight, I would like to discuss the recent announcement of our principal, Ms. Elias, being transferred to another school. Ms. Elias has been through so much at this school, from not having assistant principals when she needs them, to losing students and having to mourn and cope, all while putting her students first and making sure her students were taken care of. Ms. Elias is the rock of this school. She was always putting the better of her students before anything else. Every year, students would go down to her to take care of their schedules, because we knew that Ms. Elias would have, would make sure that we had, first, the classes that we needed in order to graduate, second, the classes that would help us to succeed in life, and, third, the classes that we wanted to improve our high school career and have fun and enjoy coming to school. Every single schedule was tailor-made for each individual student, mostly by Ms. Elias, because she knew that, because we all knew, that she had our high school careers best at heart. Ms. Elias was always going above and beyond for her students. If she knew that a student was going through a tough time, whether it was family life, school life, or grades, she would talk to them personally and see what is going on, what is affecting their grades to drop, if they need extra help, if they just need someone to talk to. She was always there. Ms. Elias never wanted any student to fail, and she would make sure that if a student was struggling, to graduate, she would make sure that they would walk across that stage personally. If a student just wanted to talk to her, regardless of the topic, she would find at least five minutes in between classes for that student to come talk to her. Ms. Elias knows every single student in this school, from sixth grade to 12th grade, she knows them by name. She cares about her students more than any other principal that I personally have ever had. Having a principal that knows you this way and that cares about you thoroughly changes the way that you go through high school and the entirety of your high school career. Removing Ms. Elias would cause this school to crumble and fall apart. She is the glue that holds us together. Without Ms. Elias, Wham's is not Wham's. So, I ask you to please reconsider this regretful decision and to keep Ms. Elias at Wham's, where she belongs. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Rosa? Ellen Rosen, I guess.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Rosen. I am not a Waterbury resident, but my daughter, who just spoke, Samantha, graduated from Wham's. I am grateful for the chance that she came to this school. What I'm not happy about is Ms. Elias being taken from us. Dr. Ruffin, you said your decisions were made based on data. I'd like to ask you, where was that data? Because if you saw the way this school is, then you would not have taken her from here. We are an arts school. Arts is an important decision in schools. With all the arts being taken away, we're an arts school that thrives. We're one of the top arts, magnet arts schools in Connecticut. Do not take away our principal. She is the one that makes Wham's Wham's. I'd like you to reconsider and look at the whole picture, not just data. And, Dr. Ruffin, I would like to make one statement, and this I know for a fact, you were invited to every single performance that we put on, and not once did you attend. So, I'd like to point that out to you. If you came, you would have saw, Wham's is a family. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Lav.
Good evening. My name is Ken Baxter, and I am a Waterbury resident, so therefore, I am a taxpayer in this town. So, I have, like these blind folks, I'm speaking on behalf of Ms. Elias. My daughter's been trying to get into this school since the sixth grade. She finally got in, this end of the school year, she snuck in at the last moment. We were thrilled, she's thrilled. We had Ms. Elias in her elementary school, so we hadn't seen Ms. Elias in, I don't know, ten years. We walked into the school, she remembered my name, my daughter's name, and my wife's name, by first-name basis. This is the kind of teacher we're talking about, or a principal, I'm sorry, that we're talking about. You talked about the statistics and the facts, none of that was presented to us prior. I mean, we would have liked to have been able to see where you came up with this decision for moving these, you know, moving Ms. Elias. The other thing is, she really cares about the students, she is part of the school, it's an arts school, you have a teacher that, or a principal that is an art background, why would you move that person? It doesn't make any sense. And I think all the stuff that's been said prior to me, said it much better than I, but I just felt like I needed to come up here and voice my opinion. I hope you guys really take into consideration and hear what we, the people, are saying. It's important, I mean, you have this open forum, and I've been through this before with the Board of Ed, and we feel like you have this open forum, you come in and you voice your opinion, and it seems like you guys have your mind made up way before. So, I hope you really can reconsider and listen to what we are saying as parents of this school. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I couldn't make it out, so I didn't want to murder it.
That's all right, it's Rakowski.
Rakowski, okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Sandra Rakowski, and I do come from the Nogatuck School System for this Magnet School. My daughter took the tour, and my daughter, besides her mother being enthusiastic, my daughter is the one that wanted to come here, and she finally did come here in eighth grade, and she will be entering, she graduated here, and she is going to be entering the 10th grade here. Ms. Elias is everything that everybody said, and I do read a lot avidly in the paper, I do read all of the test scores that came out, and I do understand what the superintendent is saying, however, I would like to see, and I probably am going to start to gather and try and pull myself, because I do these things in my free time, the data from other magnet schools in Connecticut, and that this is a seven-year school that she's supervising, and comparing what other arts magnet schools are in the state of Connecticut that are this size, how they are performing academically. Because this is an accredited arts magnet school, okay? It's a little different. I do know that I was just reading, since I heard the news, and there was a little bit of miscommunication, I guess, with the superintendent's office and the mayor's office, because I got varying stories when I called, when I found out, to my dismay, that this was being done over the summer, when the kids and the teachers weren't around. There was a little bit of a miscommunication, because I did call the superintendent's office, and that person said they didn't think that was happening, and then the mayor's office said, no, they thought it was happening. So, I just wanted to let you know that there was a lot of miscommunication about this. And I have friends that are administrators principals, growing up in Nogatuck, they're principals, but I've never seen one car wash for a fundraiser, I've never seen one attend every performance, and for the large amount of students that she has in her student body, she cares passionately about this school. If there is an academic issue, it is disappointing to me that the board and the superintendent did not offer support to a passionate administrator who has invested herself so much in her school. Instead of saying to her, what can we do to help you and make this better? We're removing you. And the other thing is, is that despite your, if that is the decision, and that is, she's not going to be here, I'm sure that all of the families here and the students are going to be able to give her a proper send-off, and not in the manner in which this was handled. Thank you.
Thank you. Imma Rakowski? No, rise back.
Good evening. My name is Imma Ripzig, and my daughter's been here since sixth grade, and she'll be a ninth grader here in the fall. I'd first like to say that I know that we all have the best intentions here with regards to the education of our children. I want nothing more than my children to be happy and healthy, and I've always believed that a good, solid education is the best way to achieve those things. With that said, I'd like to discuss our school, the Wham's, as was stated in the letter that I sent to the Board of Education. Both of my kids started off in a Catholic school here in Waterbury. My son graduated from that school and went into Kennedy High School Soror Program, and that same year, my daughter received her letter that she was admitted to Wham's for sixth grade. My daughter was so excited to get in because of her love of the arts, so it was a huge transition for our family, but especially the kids going from a small school environment to a much bigger one. I'm not going to say I wasn't worried about that, I was for sure, but one of the main things to put my mind at ease was talking to Lauren Elias, the building principal here. I know for many people, she was a big draw to the school with her love of the arts and the kids. The children here absolutely love her, they trust her, and above all, they respect her, which is such an important combination, I would say probably hard to achieve for most administrators. I was moved by her involvement with the kids and her willingness to get to know them as well as the parents, and I was inspired to get involved with the PTSO here, which in turn got my daughter to become more involved in the school and its after-school activities. She is also an effective administrator. According to ctmer.org in February of 2018, Wham's High School scored the highest of all the Waterbury Public High Schools in the state's annual assessment of school performance, which I think is a combination of attendance, scores, AP classes. She truly is the heart of this school. I hope you all took the time to look at the petition at change.org and read some of the comments left by parents and current and past students who believe in the work that Ms. Elias has done here. There were more than 500 signatures, and each of those signatures represent the difference she has made in our school community. I am pleading with you all to please reconsider and bring Lauren Elias back to Wham's. She is Wham's, and it just wouldn't be the same without her. Thank you.
Thank you.
There was a parent that was signed up before, I don't know if it was skipped over by accident, Melissa Labby, I think?
I did say the name, but the person didn't come, so, Melissa? Sure, is Melissa here? I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
No, I apologize if I didn't hear my name.
That's okay.
My name is Melissa Labby, and I'm a resident in Waterbury. I'm the proud mom of four children. I'm, they're 15, 13, 10, and 5, so I have a high schooler, a middle schooler, and two in elementary school, and I have been through six buildings in the Waterbury School District. I want to tell you about a beautiful 13-year-old girl named Michaela. When she was four years old, she was diagnosed with ADHD, and the doctors told us to put her on medication. We did not. We tried to do everything that we can, and through her school year, she struggled immensely, not with her academics, but socially, and being bullied. In fifth grade, we, with the hope and a prayer we put into the lottery for Michaela to get into Wham's, we've got the letter that she was number two on the waiting list. Thank God, four days later, we got the phone call that she was admitted into Wham's. She came a quiet, shy individual. She didn't have any friends, she didn't know what she was going to do, she had constant anxiety and panic attacks, but she came. We toured the school four times before she actually came on the first day of school, so that she would know where her classes would be, and where her locker would be, and that she would be okay, even though there were 500 other students, and know the high schoolers would not bully her at lunch, and that she would be okay. Ms. Elias allowed us to come as much as we wanted to during the summer, and one of those times, she walked around with us and showed her. This year, in seventh grade, we finally took Michaela to a child psychologist, and she was diagnosed with Asperger's. Ms. Elias sat in her office while I cried and cried, because my daughter now had another diagnosis, and what are we going to do? She held my hand and told me she will be okay, and Michaela has been okay. Ms. Elias makes a point every day of finding Michaela. Out of 500-plus students, she makes a point of finding my daughter, my 13-year-old girl, to make sure that she's okay. And she'll go, Michaela, where are you going next? Are you sure that's where you should be going? Oh, yeah, because my little speech student that sometimes does forget what she has fourth period and going into fifth period. She has been there for us. She's been there for me as a mom, but most importantly, she's been there for Michaela. Michaela had a meltdown at her, our Christmas concert this year. Ms. Elias got out of her chair and went into the lobby to comfort again my child, when the high school and the middle school choruses were having a concert. So, this, to me, is personal. Yes, I understand data, and yes, I understand other things, but for the sake of my daughter, who needs that support, who doesn't deal well with change, I beg of you to just reconsider, please, look deeper into the things, reconsider. Come meet with us, parents, let us talk to you, we would love to meet with you, and just share, you know, what's on our minds and our hearts. You know, Waterbury has this open-door policy. Invite us in, let us be part of these decisions. Thank you so much.
Nicola Hutchinson?
Good evening, board. Again, I'm another parent at Wham's. I'm a Nogatuck resident, originally from the UK, so I have a different perspective on schools in this country. We put my son in the Arts Magnet School the first time he was in sixth grade, this was almost 12 years ago. So, I've been in this school for a long time, I have a senior this year. Everybody's been talking about, oh, it's an arts school, everything is about the arts. My son came through this school, sixth grade through 12, graduated, went on to a four-year college in sciences. So, it's not just an arts school. They are doing their academics, they are succeeding in their academics. My son is going to be a senior this year, same thing, he is succeeding, and he's going to go into a mechanical engineering, that kind of school, it's not all about the arts. Ms. Elias has made that possible. She, I've been through several principals in this school in the 12 years, I understood why some of those principals have left in those 12 years. This one came as a complete shock. I am also co-president of the PTSO here at Wham's, and have been so for the past, been on PTSO for the past five, six years. I've seen changes during those five, six years with Ms. Elias in this school. She's only just had the ability to get new vice principals and new, in this school, we lost Mr. Edwards to one of the other high schools. He was a great principal in this school, too, but he moved on, we understood why. This decision does not make any sense to a lot of parents. As you can see, you've talked about the petition that was come out, a lot of past students, current students, there's been a lot of, so please talk to us, please think about this. It's more than just Lauren Elias, this is a whole school. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Pinto?
Hi. Hold on, I'm going to pause this, sorry. Hi, my name is Stephanie Pinto, I live here in Waterbury. My daughter is a freshman, is going to be a freshman in high school. I am the other co-president with Nicola of our PTSO. So, I've only been here for three years. During those three years, I have, the first year, I went through a lot, and Ms. Elias was a human being. She wasn't a face behind a desk, she was personable, she was helpful. I'm not sure that you know this, but we used to have a sewing class, and because of the budget cuts, we, I can't see over this, I'm so sorry, because of the budget cuts, we had to cut that class. So, there was no one to do the costumes for the big giant shows that we've done. Has anyone seen, has anyone been to our shows?
Yeah.
They're incredible.
Yeah.
So, Ms. Elias, I walked in for, I don't know, the book fair or something, I do the book fair here, and I walked past the conference room, and Ms. Elias is sitting at the conference table by herself with a sewing machine and a bunch of fabric. And I was like, Ms. Elias, what are you doing? She said, I'm making the costumes for, I don't, for what?
Coris line.
For a coris line. I said, what do you mean, you're ma, we have a whole, you know, kids are, send it down to them, and she said, we don't have that anymore, and if I don't make it, it doesn't get made. I, that was, I had chills. I don't know how to sew, but I wanted to help, because that's the kind of person that I am. Lauren Elias is this school. I really do not think that anyone else could take care of this school and these children the way that she can. I beg of you to think about it again, and look at those numbers again, because, I don't, I apologize, I have memory issues, and I don't talk very well, because I forget what I'm talking about, so I'm sorry, but she-
You're doing fine.
Sorry. I have been, I've only been here three years, and she has changed. That, Melissa's daughter, Michaela, this is Samantha, she was a senior last year, this is Thomas, he's a senior this year. All of these kids are here because of this woman, because we don't want to lose her. So, I beg, please, please, look at your stats and your numbers again, and if you have any questions or need to talk to any of us, please, we're here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Stephanie Pin, that was Stephanie, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak that didn't have a chance to sign up? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
Motion to return to the regular order of business?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain?
There's a young lady over there.
Go ahead, hon, go ahead.
Motion to spend the regular order of business?
Second.
Hi, I'm Victoria Bierce. I'm going to be a sophomore in high school. I'm not really good at speaking, but Ms. Elias has been my principal since I've been in kindergarten, so me being here is a big deal, and I really appreciate your time, but I do really want you to reconsider your choice to switch her to a different school, because she has helped me through so much throughout my life, and she is one of the biggest role models in my life, and I really look up to her as a person, as a principal, as someone who I want to be when I'm older, because she has shown me how to just be real, like she isn't just a principal, she is actually there for you, just like all these stories around us, she's always there to be there for you as a student, you as a person, if you need help with anything. So, I think it's really important for you guys to see everyone's stories and everyone here, and I really thank you for coming and like, listening to everyone, but this is like something that means a lot to me, and I didn't want to miss the opportunity to speak, even though I'm not the best at speaking, but I grew up dancing and acting, and Ms. Elias has put on some of the best shows I've ever been in. I've been an actor and a singer, and she has been nothing but encouragement to me, and she has shown me to strive to be the best that I can. She has sat there and taught me different things, and told me what I can do to be better, how I can improve, and this is what I am today, that's what I want to do, all because she believed in me at a very, very young age. So, being there as a little kindergartner, and her looking up to me, saying, you should do this, like, try singing, try acting, it's something that I've always loved to do because of her, and she really is very important to me. So, thank you for listening, but, thank you.
Thank you very much. Could I have a motion?
Motion to re-rereturn to the regular order of business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all very much for coming. Okay, superintendent's announcements?
Thank you, Commissioner. To reiterate some of the comments that I made earlier about the academic academy of the 265 applicants, we do have students that have been accepted to include eight classes instead of the typical five that we thought we were going to have. Likewise, we were very pleased with the students coming out, and pleased that their parents took the opportunity to trust us with opening up such an academic academy for our students, which will open up next school year. The Transition Academy for our special needs students will also open, and we're very pleased that this will help serve our students that are performing and wanting to obtain lifelong skills that will tie them into internships and jobs, and for our special education students. Likewise, the Welcome Center, which will be opening up, it replaces the concept of the current intake center, and it takes on a responsibility of providing community engagement for our parents as they register students within our school district. It is going to be an inclusive, one-stop shop that will be able to meet the needs of our students and provide them with the transportation information as well as special testing information, and will be an opportunity for new families to obtain information that's relevant to Waterbury as well as our school district. And I also gave you an update on Winna Cross. I have made some staffing changes, I am moving Lauren Elias, she will be serving in a capacity, and certainly with all the comments made about her, I believe that grade principals can be great regardless of where they are, to be able to impact the lives of our children. She will be assigned as a principal in special assignment, working with a large group of students that will be in our Willby campus, and she will be working there as an administrator in charge of all of the operations, and because of the expertise that she brings in sixth through 12th grade, she will be serving in an equal grade level in her new assignment. Also, I'm making the administrative assignment for Mike LaRusso, who is currently the principal of Wallace, he will be a principal on special assignment in charge of operations at Willby. As you know, Willby is one of our schools that we have worked very hard on to turn around, it is still currently a turnaround school, but it's also a turnaround school without any additional funding, because it is not one of the three schools that have been identified with the commissioner's network. I think those administrators and their reassignment will be an asset to the school in, both in terms of the operational side, and in terms of being able to look at the structure that will enhance student participation and the growing of students, and not only the academics, but also making certain that they have a real, safe environment. So, those two changes become effective immediately. I also want to share with you that, you know, as I shared earlier, those- I also want to share with you that, you know, as I shared earlier, those decisions about any kind of decision-making for staff moving is always done with intentionality to make certain that I'm doing the very best thing for students, all meaning all. I can certainly appreciate a concern, and I'm deeply committed to making certain that both WHAMs and Wallace will have the leadership that will take them to the next level, and that will be done through an application process which becomes open immediately. There will be another change that I will make that I will discuss with the board at a later time, but those are the two big changes that I have made thus far, and I'll look forward to being able to continue the communication to make certain that all children receive what they deserve. And I'm deeply committed, just a comment aside from what I've just said in terms of the decisions for reassignment, that decision did not come because someone told me to make the decision. It is based on, so the Commissioners are not to blame for the decision, and, and the mayor's office is not to blame for that decision. It really is, when you look at an entire district of 32 schools, you want great people, and I believe we have great people, but you want to make certain the great people are in the places that they need for optimum growth and consideration for all of our students. And that's my final closing statement on that matter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for listening to our, we've taken up consideration in the whole three minutes of listening to our, we have to say it.
Point of, point of order.
Okay, next.
Appreciate it.
I have no comments this evening. Committee of the Whole, Vice President Harvey.
All right, thank you, Madam President. All right, item 8.1. Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee of the Whole recommends approval of the collective bargaining agreement by and between Waterbury Board of Education and the United Service Employees Union, UPSEU. Waterbury Board of Education Administrative Support Staff Local 424, Unit 69 for the period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2022. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second. Discussion. Commissioner Awad.
I apologize, I wanted to ask a question earlier. Tara Stiller, thank you. So this is the union contract for the grant-funded positions.
That's correct.
So my question is, running an agency solely on grants, is we've calculated raises that we're going to give. How do we address that when we did a grant application that had certain amount of dollars within them? How do we absorb those raises going out or any other changes? And I apologize for my ignorance, but I'm just wondering, how, how does that work? How do we, how do we negotiate a raise for something we've already signed in the past?
Well, I can't speak in terms of the, the grant application process or what goes on on that end, but this contract does provide for the board's ability to eliminate positions if grant funding is unavailable or reduced or limited in some way. So there is the ability to adjust staffing if needed.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you. So there's room to move in that respect, and that was the 14-day notice that we put in there? Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other question? Okay, thank you very much, Tara. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries. 8.2, Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you. Item 8.2, ladies and gentlemen, the Committee of the Whole recommends approval of the collective bargaining agreement by and between Waterbury Board of Education and the United Services Employees Union, UPSEU. Waterbury Board of Education Classroom Assistance Local 424, Unit 68 for the period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2022. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Number nine, Committee on Finance, Commissioner Awad.
Okay, so, Committee on Finance recommends the Waterbury Board of Education for the following agreements for out-of-school, out-of-district placements for students with disabilities as required by their individual education, is it program or plan? Program or? Plan. Thank you. I, I, that wasn't, I thought it was a plan. Attlebrook, $1,364,160. Boys and Girls Village, $739,350. Capital Region Education Council, $1,710,000. Connecticut Holdings LLC, $923,700. Connecticut Junior Republic Association, $273,204. Hope Academy of Milford, $295,290. University of St. Joseph's, $917,922. Children's Center of Hampton, $665,826. And the Wheeler Clinic, $855,594. So moved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, 9.2.
The, ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Finance recommends the Board of Education approve the application to the Connecticut State Department of Education Carl D. Perkins' Career and Technical Education Secondary Work-Based Learning Enhancement Grant. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries. 9.3.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Finance recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the application for the Connecticut State Department of Education Carl D. Perkins' Career and Technical Student Organization Statewide Improvement Grant. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries.
Committee on Finance recommends the Waterbury Board of Education apply for the Connecticut State Department of Education Family Resource Center Grant for Reed School. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Finance Committee recommends the Waterbury Board of Education apply for the Connecticut State Department of Education Family Resource Grant for Wilson School. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Finance Committee recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the following transfer in the fiscal year 2018-19. From curriculum instruction substitute teacher's account of $475,000, from the operation and maintenance for custodians account, $50,000, from the operations and maintenance account for school maintenance, $14,000, to the operation and maintenance building improvement of $539,000. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Roll call? I think we only have one opposed.
I think we should still have a roll call.
Okay.
Commissioner Awad?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pigno?
Yes.
Commissioner Soriano Adorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stengel?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
No.
President Brown?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee of Finance recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve an agreement-
Pull her mic close.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee of Finance recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve an agreement with the following agencies for the sub-grantees services under the school readiness program for program years 2019 through 2021. The Art Child Development Center, $704,966. Catholic Charities, $356,960. Community, Children's Community School, $321,264. Children's Village, $178,480. Children's Center of GWHN, I should have done my homework, $776,388. Easter Sees Rehabilitation Center of Greater Waterbury East and West Campuses, $1,668,788. Nogatuck Valley Community College CDC, $187,480. The Muriel Moore Child Development Center, also within New Opportunities, $740,692. The Rainbow Academy, $196,328. St. Mary's CDC, $312,340. Team Slocum, $354,816. The Waterbury Board of Education, $2,028,000. And the Greater Waterbury YMCA, $2,088,216. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries. 9.8.
You guys are giving me a workout. Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Finance recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve, to rescind their vote of June 20th for the approval of Amendment 2 to the professional services agreement of PTSMA, also known as Select Physical Therapy, to provide athletic training services for interscholastic activities. What is this?
That was going to be my question when we got to there.
Somebody second it so we can have-
Second. Discussion.
Nobody knows, right? Joe Gromit's not here. Darren?
It's in your jacket, everyone.
I know, but I don't think, I'll be very honest, I didn't see it, and can someone help us with this a little bit?
What it is, is you voted to approve Amendment 2.
Yep.
The vote was not necessary. It was to be done only by a letter of agreement which Corporation Council would do, and they wanted you to rescind the vote.
So we have to undo something we didn't have to do in the first place?
Right.
Wow, good. Okay, and I apologize for not doing my homework. Thank you for clarifying it. Never mind, Darren, thanks. So moved. Did you have a question?
We're in discussion, go ahead.
Why do we have to rescind it then? It was unnecessary, it just exists. Who cares?
I wasn't in question, Corporation Council, I did what they asked.
Okay.
Okay.
Young man has a question.
Yeah, what is D/B/A?
Jacob?
Doing business as.
What is D/B/A?
Doing business as.
Doing business as.
Good question. I, I really didn't know that either. Good job. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries. Number 10, Commissioner Van Stone.
Thank you, Madam President, through you.
It's up, it was up to the pleasure of you and the board. Would you like to put these as one on consent, or do you want to read them all?
I'm not sure we can do that.
Well, I just thought of it.
I think, I think Commissioner Awad would like to see me read them all.
I don't care, Tom, I'll save you the pain.
I'm not sure we can do that without a motion, but-
You could make-
I'll hold to a lot of the items to be taken as a whole.
Second.
Committee?
Still, I can read them all.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so if you do it as a whole, then we can, sorry, Kathy, I just thought of it.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Curriculum recommends that this board passes item 10.1, 6 through 8 social societies curriculum, 10.2, early childhood pre-K, 3 and 4 curriculum, 10.3, request approval of the new grade 9 to 12 mathematics curriculum, 10.4, grades 9 through 12 English Language Arts ELA curriculum, 10.5, K to 5 English Language Arts ELA curriculum, 10.6, grades 10, 11 chemistry curriculum, not sure to say any better, 10.7, grades 9 through 12 high school health curriculum.
Second.
So moved. I'm sorry.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Committee on Building in School Facilities, I would ask if you would like to do that also as one vote?
Chair, can I get a bulk motion?
Motion to make it one vote.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. With the approval of the Committee on Building in School Facilities, we recommend the approval of the following. Item 11.1, which is the approval of the ed specs for the proposed Washington School Elevator Project. 11.2, approval of ed specs for the proposed Bunker Hill School Elevator Project. 11.3, approval of a construction contract with JA Rosa Construction LLC for elevator additions to Chase, Hopeville, Kingsbury, and Sprague Schools. As well as, as well as?
Two more.
Item 11.4, school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments, and 11.5, school of facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Number 12, superintendent's notification to the board.
Motion to see and place on file superintendent's notification to the board.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries. Number 13, unfinished business of preceding meeting only. Okay, seeing none. 14 other unfinished, new and miscellaneous business. Commissioner Van Stone?
Thank you, Madam President, through you. As a superintendent, I touched on a couple different times in both the workshop and here in this meeting, Wendell Cross is progressing. There will be a building and facilities meeting called to discuss that in its own right. Additionally, I'd like to work with Central Office to set up some kind of tour, which we had quasi-promised the, the parents of the Wendell Cross project as we got to a place where the site was a little more open to having visitors walk through. So I look forward to getting that on the calendar. Additionally, that committee will meet as well to kind of flesh out a better way to do school facilities requests. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, sounds like a good idea. Commissioner Hernandez, did you have a, okay. There's no executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.